Thank you. I'd like to call the Monday, December 12th, 2022 meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call them out?
Director Arndt.
Here.
Felton.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Raj.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lalaberty.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
At seven present at six o'clock.
Great. Bill's beating us. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Our Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have got a packed house. We are so excited. First up, before we get to you all, good folks, is the approval of our meeting agenda and minutes, and I'm looking for a motion to approve our meeting for tonight and for the committee of the whole and regular meeting minutes from November 28th, 2022, and the new school board orientation work session minutes from December 5th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. And now moving on to the report section, and the very first folks up are you, Quality in Action. Activities Director Brady Krueger is here to highlight fall sports and activities this season.
We brought a party with you.
I did bring a party. I know how to bring a party. So, thank you for inviting us to attend and speak at today's board meeting and share some of the highlights from our fall season. Thank you to Dr. Zambrino, thank you to the school board, thank you to Leah Borg, who's back there, middle school administrator, Mr. Ochaki, high school administrator, for their continued support of Packer athletics and activities. I appreciate the opportunity again to come before you to highlight not only our coaches, our advisors, but our students as well as our programs. Tonight, you're going to hear from some incredible students, athletes, and performers. You're going to hear about some incredible students, athletes, and performers, but more importantly, you're going to hear about some wonderful people. At the end of the day, we want our school and activities program to not only produce good students, good athletes, good performers, but we want to produce some high-quality, high-character kids. Many of these kids excel in all phases and are heavily involved in our school and community. I also want to take a moment to recognize the coaches and advisors that work with these individuals every day. They put in countless hours, okay? Many of them, it's a year-long commitment. These individuals have a unique opportunity to serve as role models and help lead and shape our students. The relationship between a coach and advisor is one of the most powerful and tremendous relationships that I've seen in terms of the ability to influence a student and their life later on. I'm glad to be at South St. Paul, working with some incredible people. And without delaying any further, I will let our program speak for themselves. First up, we're going to have our theater director, Mr. Eric Holson, come up.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to ask everybody who is here from our fall musical, Little Shop of Horrors, to come up and stand behind me. Thank you. And then I'm going to make them really angry with me because, but I'm going to give you guys, because I'm going to ask you all to say something too. All right? So when, but I'll tell you what it is now so you can think about it. So I'm going to ask you to talk about one thing you learned from theater. Okay? But you have some time to think about it. All right, cool. All right, so Little Shop of Horrors was our fall musical, and we're very, very excited to be able to share with you that we have accomplished something for the first time in South St. Paul history, which is that we received outstanding for overall production, excuse me, we got an award called Achievement in Musical Theater. It's changed names recently, so that's, which means that we will be taking our show on the road this June. We'll be doing a four-minute medley from our show at the Orpheum Theater, which we're very excited about. And that's the first time that's happened in South St. Paul, and so we're excited about it. I remember at one point in our production, Brian McTeer and I kind of looked at each other, Brian McTeer is our technical director, and we said, you know, this show is really clicking. And apparently, the judges thought so too, so that was cool. So the honors that we pulled in for Little Shop, as I mentioned already, honorable mention for achievement in musical theater, outstanding overall production, honorable mention for overall performance, honorable mention for ensemble performance, honorable mention for acting performance, honorable mention for vocal performance, this is a long list.
Right?
Outstanding costume crew, honorable mention for run crew, outstanding overall technical team, outstanding sound crew, and outstanding light crew. In addition, we had several individuals receive honors. Elise Boudreau was outstanding performance in a leading role, Seymour B., and Tyler Modrow, honorable mention in leading role for Seymour A., there's Tyler, and Lily Rosengren, honorable mention in leading role for Audrey A., there's Lily. Outstanding performance in supporting role went to Wyatt Roth, who played Orin. We don't have him here, but he was fantastic. And Annie Voss in the role of Crystal, and he's right here. And then outstanding in technical leadership went to Bella Maurer, our board operator. And honorable mention technical leadership went to Kaylee Contreras, who was our stage manager. We also had evaluatory shout-outs to Abby Powers, who played one of our Audrey's, Abby is right behind me, to Will Murray, who played Mushnik. He's not here. Trey Allen, who played the voice of the plant. There's Trey, I know it's on. Malia Meyer, who played Ronette. Just three girls, right? And Grace Kliniski, who played the other chiffon. Chiffon, I got it. All right? And then also to our ensemble, our dance ensemble, got an evaluatory shout-out for movement. So, we're very proud of these guys, and then I'm going to let you guys talk about, so what's something you learned in theater?
Who wants to go first?
We'll start with Elise.
Nice. Shall I introduce myself?
Please.
Okay. Hi, I'm Elise Boudreau. I'm a senior. I've been doing theater since sixth grade, and something that I think I've learned from theater is that, well, it's really boosted my self-confidence in myself and helped me just be more confident in myself in life in general. And it's also boosted my public speaking and like reading and writing skills, those kinds of things, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Trey Allen. I'm a sophomore, and I've been doing theater since sixth grade, and one thing that theater helped me learn is be a lot more creative in my thinking and like problem-solving, and work a lot better with the people around me, and make better relationships with them.
I'm Lily Rosengren. I'm a junior, and I've been doing theater since sixth grade, and something theater's taught me are people skills and how to work as like a collective group.
My name is Malia Meyer. I'm a senior. I've been doing theater since sixth grade, and something theater has taught me is how to be more comfortable being myself in all parts of my life.
I'm Abby Powers. I'm a senior. I've been doing theater since sixth grade, and I've, theater taught me people skills and how to communicate with people.
I'm Annie. I'm a senior, and I've been doing theater since sixth grade, and theater has helped me find my passion in life, and it's taught me how to really work hard for something when I really love it.
Hi, I'm Tyler. I've been doing theater since seventh grade, and I left for a couple of years, but I'm back now. I'm a senior. I think that theater has taught me that no matter where I go in life, that I will always have a purpose, and that purpose is to stay true to myself, because when I do, I affect others' lives around me as well, so.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Contreras. I'm a sophomore. I've been doing theater since sixth grade, and theater has taught me how to work under very stressful conditions, and how to be, you know, a really important member in a team, and also has taught me how to be, you know, important in my independence.
I'm Bella. I've been doing theater since sixth grade, and I'm in 10th grade now, and I think theater has taught me more about how to problem solve, especially problem-solving in a group.
I'm Grace. I've been doing theater since sixth grade. I'm a junior, and theater and just being here really taught me that I'm deserving of something. It gave me that self-love and confidence that I wouldn't be able to get otherwise.
Ah.
So, thanks for having us. Next show is going to be January 20th and 21st. Yeah, that's right. And it's our Winter One Acts, which you'll see many of these people in, as actors, technicians, directors, or playwrights, because we have students doing all those roles in One Acts. So, thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. So many. Oh, sorry.
Can you keep your seniors up here for a minute so I can ask my standard question?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
If you're not a senior, you can sit down, I guess.
Still, congratulations to you.
Yes.
You're wondering what the question is, right? It's the same one every time. I just want to know what your plans are for next year, so maybe Tyler, you could start, and you had a very, very good speech, and I respect everything you said.
Thank you. I plan next year to, I think I'm going to take a year to get my generals done at a community college, and after that, I plan to go to the U University of Minnesota and pursue acting.
Thank you.
Very cool.
I'm Annie, again, and I'm planning to major in musical theater and get a BFA, and I've been accepted a lot of places, but I haven't decided yet where I'm going.
Thank you.
I'm Abby, again, and I haven't decided if I'm going to go into theater or natural resources.
Thanks, Abby.
I'm Malia, and I'm not sure where I'm going to college yet, but I want to major in musical theater.
Wonderful.
I'm Elise. I'm probably the only one who's not majoring in musical theater of this lineup, but I'm not exactly sure where I want to go yet, but I would like to major in zoology for like exotic animal veterinary, but I'm still going to pursue theater as a thing on the side, so thank you.
You've got time, right? So, spring musical, then Bill can ask his question again. From the audience.
Didn't hear what I wanted, but I, you know, congratulations to all of you, and thanks for humoring me, okay?
He wants you all to go to River Falls, so.
Congrats again to Mr. Holson. For those of you that didn't get a chance to see the fall play, they did an absolutely incredible job. It was absolutely a fantastic show. Couple of things I want to highlight, and it'll be kind of a common emergent theme, is a lot of the kids that are up here tonight, you will see them because they are so involved and so successful in so many aspects of South St. Paul High School. Just incredible students, incredible athletes, incredible performers, and so on. And also incredible job to Mr. Holson. He has really made theater a place for all students to feel welcome, accepted, and kind of part of the greater school community. All right, next up, we'll have our swim program with Coach Ty Carrier come up.
Good evening. I invited my captains to come and join us this evening. I have two of them with us. One was not able to make it. I wanted to give a quick recap of the season from a team perspective, and then highlight a couple of the achievements of the people I have standing with me today. So, during our season, every athlete set at least one personal best at their final meet of the season, which is really how you measure progress in swim team. It's not a win-loss, it's more about personal improvement. So, 22 out of 25 swims at our section meet were personal bests, which is an amazing percentage to have, and we placed 10th out of 13 teams at the section meet. One of our athletes here, Chloe, is a senior, has been a captain for two years, was a letter winner this year, all-conference honorable mention, had seven top-three finishes at dual meets. Not able to attend this evening, but worth noting, our other team captain, who is a junior, Abby Nunez, was a letter winner, all-conference honorable mention, top 16 in the section in the 100 backstroke, is number two all-time in South St. Paul history in the 100 backstroke, number four all-time in the 50 backstroke, and won the team vote for hardest worker. And last but not least, Anna Erickson, to my left, team captain for two years, letter winner, all-conference honors, individual academic gold honors, 10 first-place finishes at dual meets, and really liked the number nine, finished number nine all-time in South St. Paul history in the 50 breaststroke, the 50 butterfly, the 50 freestyle, and the 100 breaststroke.
Woo, play those numbers in the lottery.
She was the MVP of the team by points scored, and won the team vote for the Packer Pride Award.
Yeah.
They are both seniors, did you want to know? UWRF alumni, by the way. What's that? I'm a UWRF alumni. Congratulations. So am I. Yes, I would like to know both, if they would share.
I'm Chloe. After high school, I plan to get my generals, and then go to the U University of Minnesota to become an autopsy technician.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
And I'm Anna Erickson, and right now, I'm thinking UW Stout and major in something science-related to become a physician's assistant.
If you change your mind from Stout to River Falls, you know, you could use me for a reference, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, and it's 30 miles closer, too.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ty. Next up, we'll have our football program and Coach Manuel Sprigle.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
I got two seniors with us today. Gage Mesias, Gage, can you just go hand that out, this 1111? And our other one, Anthony Samuel. Anthony, you can follow suit along that side. You know, Mr. Krueger was talking earlier, talking about, you know, just sports and what mentors and advisors and coaches all do. You know, there's a lot of pieces with football that kind of do go year-round, and certainly the team does get recognized for it. Right now, I'm just handing out an article from last year. So around this time last year, we had just carried on that tradition at Olm Appliance, handing out, or I should say, unloading Christmas trees, and I nominated our kids with the Minnesota Football Coaches Association. So last year, we had won the community service award for going and doing that, and that gives a nice little synopsis of what happened last year, and what's been going on in town for the last, you know, two, three decades with kids unloading Christmas trees. And that tradition continued again. The second thing that Anthony handed out was just some, you know, just a thanks, just a nice thanks from the Lions, who the kids partners with each year, and they go there, and they're really always hesitant. Every time I ask Anthony to go and help unload trees, Anthony always says, I can't, I got a test I got to study for, I got something I got to do. So, we kind of pushed up the time and showed on up early and got those things unloaded pretty fast, try to get before school. So, it's just a good example of the stuff that the kids are doing. You know, going through our season, it's kind of, you know, you talk about what is the greater vision and the stuff that we try to accomplish with football? We took the kids to a team camp in Duluth and visit a great institution in our state and get to go see Lake Superior along the way. We see a lot of good competition up there, like Elk River was up there, there's the 5A-class state champs, and it's just really fun for the kids to get away, to get to know each other, and see a college, and expose them to life after high school, after South St. Paul. After that, we spent a lot of time with you guys walking in the Capoja Days Parade, and we spent $350 giving out candy that we kind of went through before we really got to Southview. So, we're troubleshooting that problem, but that's really cool, because both of those experiences give the kids ways to see opposite ends of the community. You know, the Lions are a little bit more established group in town, and it's really great for them to get to meet our kids in the high school and stay connected that way, and kind of see like how does the generations exist in South St. Paul with that? And then when the kids were walking in the parade, then they get to see the other end and see like, you know, like when you guys are out, you know, in the community, all these kids are looking up to you, and so they get a chance to meet all the kids when they go and hand out stuff. And then we had a car wash on Southview that was really, really great, and that was a super-successful day when we got to kind of experience just the regular citizens of South St. Paul, and our kids did a really nice job washing a lot of cars, and we did a great job, and the generosity of the community was great. We also did a youth football kickoff piece where we had a dunk tank, which might have been the grossest thing that I've maybe experienced. The water starts out clear, and it kind of ends up looking like this gray sewage towards the latter part. So, that's certainly something that's fun, if you guys are looking for, to sit on a seat, you can do that next year. And so all of these things are kind of good examples of just pieces that, you know, trying to be a part of the community for the kids and have them be a part of things. And then comes the actual football season, and this year's football season was a real big challenge, and that's if we weren't doing, if we weren't trying to show like, you know, football is more than just what happens during the season, it would be, it would be real difficult. But definitely, you know, without winning a game, it definitely can be easy to kind of lose the mission of what Packer football is and what it means to be a part of South St. Paul. But, you know, throughout the whole season, we played a lot of really good opponents, St. Thomas Academy is a fantastic 5A opponent in the state tournament, so was Mada Medei. Simley, our state champion in 4A, congratulations to them, they are a real solid program as well, and those are the people that we play, and that's our schedule, and these guys go out there, no matter who it is, and they work really hard, and it's something definitely to be really, really proud of. In the end, you know, I guess the lessons that we try to show, whether we're unloading trees, or walking in the parade, or playing in a game, just that life is about relationships. Sports are about pushing your limits and being a part of something bigger than yourself, and then being a Packer football player is special. So that's kind of what we're at for this year for these guys.
I love that, the impact you have on the community. I love it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Manuel, I have two questions for each of your captains, if they would. Okay, thank you.
Hello, I am Gage Mesias.
And my question is, what are your plans for the future?
Well, I was looking into electrician, but now, since I wanted to be, since I was younger, I wanted to be an engineer for a while, so I'm going to try that out first, and then if that doesn't work out, I'll just go on my backup plan, which is that.
There's time.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm Anthony Samuel. I attend, doing like, my generals basically don't, at like Emver Hills, and then probably transferring to Hamlin University to either go after majoring in forensics or business.
Very cool. Thank you.
I just want to like do something big with my life, that's all. Just like make a difference in the world.
Thank you.
Yeah. No. Love that. Impact.
Manuel. Mr. Sprigle.
You know, to kind of build off what Coach Sprigle talked about with building community and, you know, what it means to be a Packer, one of the coolest things that we did this fall was a couple of the elementary principals during homecoming said, hey, can we bring the kids down? And so, we threw a bunch of our captains on a bus, we got the band, we got this dance line, we took them through the elementary schools, and it was a blast. They marched through the halls, they signed autographs, they had a great time, the kids had a great time. A lot of the individuals that went down with us are here today, and it was just a really cool thing to do for not only the high school, but also for the elementary school. All right, next up, we're going to have our tennis program and Becca Sprigle.
Matthew. Mr. Sprigle. Before you go, can you come back up here once? I didn't get a chance to say this, but I was, attended every home game this year, and I pointed out to a lot of people, I know our record wasn't good, but one thing I saw in all your kids was no quit, and that is a direct reflection on you, so keep up the good work, okay?
That's kind of who we are as South St. Paul, so yeah, that's, I would agree.
Well, yeah, I agree with that, but, but I mean, it just was so rewarding to know that even though we're playing Simley in the rain and they're kind of kicking us, we didn't quit. We had three, four kids on every tackle, and that's a reflection on you, Manuel, so congratulations.
Thanks, thanks much.
All right, hi, everyone. I am Rebecca Sprigle, and I am the girls' tennis coach, and I am here with five of my wonderful players, whom I will introduce to you momentarily. Our season theme this year was add-in, and for those of you who don't know much about tennis, add-in is sort of a play on tennis scoring, because when the server has game point, they say add-in. So, I challenged the girls this year to add-in or buy-in, commit, put your whole heart into tennis, and see the advantages that it would bring them in school, in tennis, and then, of course, in life. So, I'll start with school. We, our team this year received the Academic Gold Award from the Minnesota State High School Coaches Association, which means that they had a cumulative GPA of 3.89 overall for our girls, which is very impressive. And beyond that, we had four seniors, all of whom are here, or three of whom, oh, you're all here. Who are we missing? Oh, Madison, sorry, who were academic all-state, which also meant that they had to have a GPA of 3.75 or higher. So, Lauren Bauer, Sarah Winstanson, Madison Crone, who is not here, and Malia Meyer. So, very impressive. School is a huge part of this, these girls' commitment to our community and to tennis. They certainly also bought into tennis. We started our season in the summer, really, with a lot of summer tennis drills and match play, and pushing themselves in different ways this summer to prepare for the season. We also took a team trip right at the beginning of the season, which was a highlight for all of us, to Alexandria. We played our first-ever Under the Lights match this August. We had Rosemount here, and we had a big community night with lights, and we played until, I think, 11 o'clock that night, so it was kind of a long night, but really exciting. And then the tennis speaks for itself. We had probably the best, well, not probably, I think it was the best finish, finishing second in the section, making it to the section final, which was an incredible experience for all of us. We also had three players play in the individual tournament and make it to place in the individual tournament. Lauren Bauer and Malia Meyer placed fourth in the doubles, and Sarah Winstanson placed fourth in the singles. And we had five all-conference players, these lovely people here, Lauren Bauer, Sarah Winstanson, Annie Felton, Olivia Malumbi, and Malia Meyer. And last of all, in life, I think that tennis teaches us a lot of unique things, good sportsmanship not being the least of them, and strong integrity, having to call your own lines and determine, you know, when things are in or out, is a really big part of tennis. Mental toughness and persevering through some really challenging matches, sometimes that didn't come out the way we wanted to, wanted them to, but just getting stronger as a team because of it. So, it was an honor and a privilege to coach all of these great ladies this year.
Two seniors, Malia has already told me, but.
Um, I'm undecided, but River Falls isn't off the list.
And you want to be a teacher like your mom?
Engineer, something like that.
An engineer like your dad, okay. Thank you, Sarah.
I'm planning on going to UMD and pursuing a degree in chemical engineering.
Thank you.
Lots of engineers tonight. And, oh, wait, tennis coaches, didn't they?
I was just going to step up and say that, probably a little bit too modest. Becca, come back up here. Pepper was here.
Oh, there you are. You were sitting back up.
Come on up. So, our tennis coaches, so not only were our students and athletes have an absolutely phenomenal year, and we're recognized with all kinds of postseason awards, but we have two, our coaches were recognized, Becca Sprigle as the 3A Tennis Coach of the Year section, and Assistant Coach of the Year, Prepper Meyer. And I can say, in my experience as being involved in athletics and activities, there are not two more deserving people than those two right there. They absolutely did a fantastic job, and you can see kind of the character and who they are as people, and how that reflects in the individual girls that they just brought up here. They absolutely, it was a wonderful, wonderful season, and they did a fantastic job, so congrats to them. All right, next up, we will have cross-country, and Jenna Ramirez.
Hi there, I'm Jenna Ramirez, and I actually didn't have any seniors this year. We had a kind of a unique year. I ended up, I actually kind of enjoyed the fact that we didn't have any senior captains, because I had a lot of my younger kids step up into leadership roles this year, and I got to see an off, like, a lot of different kids use their skills to show leadership in our program. So, yeah, first of all, cross-country is kind of a unique sport in that it is boys and girls combined, so boys and girls practice together every day. We also have just one team that practices together, seven through 12. They all compete together. Some of our meets, the boys and girls, take off the line at the same exact time, and some meets, they're separate. And, um, some meets, they're separate, but, um, it's kind of a unique program that way, um, with a unique dynamic. The team culture is really important to me in cross-country and kind of creating a culture, um, where everyone supports and respects everyone and we celebrate, um, individual, uh, PRs and successes as a whole group. And my team and the leaders on my team do an awesome job of kind of keeping that, um, legacy going. We have had amazing leaders in the past and the younger kids just step up and they have taken that upon themselves to keep that going with our team. As far as our season went, we had a lot of growth. We had, the majority of my, uh, team was seventh, eighth, and ninth graders. So we're in a real growing season. Um, we, like I said, we didn't lose any seniors. So we're all looking toward growth and we saw a lot of that this year. Every single kid improved, um, greatly by many minutes in their time over the course of the season. Um, I do have two highlights. I have, uh, Julia Beebo with me today. And as a seventh grader, she earned honorable mention for all-conference. Um, and I'd like to point out that she is competing against, um, mainly high schoolers. And, um, in that conference meet as a varsity runner, as a seventh grader, to earn that, that honor is really impressive, so. Um, and then the, oh, I'll mention, it's a 5K, so 3.1 miles. Um, and so our kids have a lot of grit. They have a lot of determination. They work really, really hard. They run all summer long to prepare for this. I also want to point out, I know Grayson Simons isn't here, but he is an eighth grader and he also earned honorable mention for all-conference. And as an eighth grader, um, we looked down the list and he was the youngest, or every, every kid that beat him at conference was a high schooler. Um, and so he has, uh, a lot of good things to look forward to as a young runner going forward in our conference, too. So.
Way to go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then I asked Julia to think about some highlights from season, if you have any to share.
The bus rides to each meet were just really fun. We listened to music and just chat and tried to get excited about running 3.1 miles. And, um, just the practices, uh, Coach Bakken and Ms. Ramirez, they would just make practices really fun and it was just fun to practice.
Agreed.
Julia, do you still run at Spring Lake Park Reserve? In Hastings?
Not this season.
No.
You didn't, okay.
Mm-mm.
Because they have a buffalo herd there now to run around. I just thought that would throw a little extra into the cross-country season, you know?
Great, thank you.
Great job.
All right, next up, we'll have our volleyball program and Coach Tyler LaRose.
Hello, everyone, and I'm Bill. I did live in River Falls for one year in 2015.
I think you shared that with me at the new teachers.
Did we? Okay.
I think so, yes.
Get a little bit of cred there from Bill.
Yes, every little bit helps. Hi, I'm Tyler LaRose. I'm the Spanish teacher at the middle school and head volleyball coach.
I'm Elena. I'm a middle blocker and outside hitter for our varsity team.
Yes, and Elena's a sophomore. So, um, continuing on the growth we, we, we set last year as a program, uh, we, we saw even more of that this year. Almost every statistical category and an on-court product was, was even a notch higher this year than it was last year. And we did more off the court with the girls and the community and stuff like that, too. Uh, we had 48 girls on the high school team this year, finished, finished the, the year on a team. And then our middle school program had another 24 girls between seventh and eighth grade. So we had 62 girls, um, almost 1 in 10 girls in our secondary building are playing volleyball right now. And that's really, really cool.
That's cool.
Uh, the, the varsity level, we finished with our best statistical season since 2007, are really building on some of those successes we started last year. We got our first ever Metro East Conference win. I know that sounds like a shocking statement and it kind of is for me to contemplate, too, but we, since joining the Metro East Conference in 2014, had never won a conference match. Uh, we beat Hastings this year and we did it on our pink-out night where we raised over $1,700 for the, um, family member of one of our players who was battling breast cancer. So to be able to do all that. To see the girls put forth all of their efforts in selling the, the pink shirts and the hoodies that we sold, um, that are almost now ubiquitous in the school, it's kind of cool actually, to see their work pay off like that in such a meaningful and long-lasting way, something that'll last long after the season is over. Uh, we had 18 letter earners on the varsity team, which to, to need 18 people to step up and play in a six-person sport is crazy. That speaks to the depth we had this year and the, the willingness of all of our girls to put themselves up and try to, you know, play at, play at the varsity level this year. We needed a lot to get that job done. We had two academic all-state winners, Olivia Bonk and Margaret Michelson, who are busy, uh, with other winter sports right now, but they both finished with, uh, our, the Minnesota Volleyball Coaches Association requires a 3.8 GPA or better throughout your high school career. And they both finished well above that mark. We had two academic all-state finishers there. And then our team, we finished with the academic all-state silver medal for the varsity team, which requires, uh, a GPA of 3.5 to 3.75. We came in just under that 3.75 mark with our varsity roster. And that was really something that we can celebrate because that hasn't happened in, in quite a while either. Uh, now we'll, we'll let you hear from Elena here. She's got some things to talk about. I have to raise the microphone up, which is jarring.
Um, some things about my season, um, I was an all-conference winner. Um, I was, uh, all-state honorable, or like, I got nominated for all-state this season, um, which was really daunting, but really exciting for me. Um, I'm a captain and next year I'm going to be a captain again. Um, this season, I just really loved bonding with my team and my favorite memories was the pink-out. It was just a really emotional night for us and it was really fun to experience that and get really close to my teammates this season.
And Elena's too humble, or maybe she didn't read the card well enough because she's so nervous. But, um, this Saturday, she will be featured in Omaha, Nebraska at the American Volleyball Coaches Association's Phenom Showcase. Uh, there will be hundreds of college coaches from all around the nation. And she was, uh, she made the watch list last year as a freshman. And now she'll be spending her weekend along with me. I'll be going to the clinic as a coach, but Elena and I will see each other on Saturday down in Omaha, of all things.
Yay, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you to everybody, Dr. Zamburino and all of you for your support of, of volleyball and, and all activities throughout the years.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's so exciting.
You know, another thing to kind of highlight here is, is, as kids come up and share their memories of the season, a lot of them don't actually talk about wins and losses and stats. It's about the relationships. It's the memories. It's the bus rides. It's all the other little things that are so important of this experience and participating in athletics and activities. All right, next up, we're going to have girls' soccer with Coach Tom Hart.
Hi, I'm Tom Hart. I'm the girls' varsity soccer coach. Um, I had a great year coaching the girls. Um, overall, it was a very positive and fun season for our team. Uh, we were fairly young squad, 11 of our team, 22 were sophomores or younger. Um, we saw a lot of growth in a, in a variety of positions over the course of the season. Overall, we finished, uh, 5-8-2 against really tough conference and such, section schedule. Many of our games were within a goal. We played competitively and gave some really great efforts against some really strong teams and I was really proud of how the girls played this year. Uh, just a couple of stats from the year. Um, we had 33 goals scored this year, which was 11 more than the previous season. Um, we faced seven top 10 ranked teams in Class A or Double-A, uh, including our state, um, champion, Holy Angels, and runner-up Mottamidai. Um, we were the number five seed in our section, uh, losing to number four, Simley, 1-0 in the section quarterfinal. And then academically, our team actually earned the Team Gold Award with a 3.774 GPA. Uh, we had 18 individuals of the 22 earn individual academic awards, uh, having a GPA of over 3.5. Uh, with me today, I have, uh, senior defender and also captain Kylie Evisich. She was all-conference, also earned our section Player of the Match Award. And then we also have, um, senior midfielder Scarlett, I'm sorry, sophomore midfielder Scarlett Johansson. Uh, she was, um, all-conference and also earned our Offensive Player of the Year Award. I'll let them tell you their favorite soccer memory from this year.
Okay, um, I'm Scarlett and my favorite soccer memory from this year was playing Bloomington Kennedy and we were down 3-1 in the first half and ended up winning 5-4 in the second half. And we had all five, we had five different goal scorers that game.
That's awesome. That is a good memory.
My name's Kylie and my favorite memory is beating Viz. Period.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you.
Kylie.
I'm still undecided, but I am interested in physical therapy.
Thank you, Kylie.
All right, next up, we'll have our boy soccer coach, Noe Quinko, come up.
Hi, I'm Noe Quinko. It's, uh, my first year, uh, being a coach for South St. Paul. And also my first year coaching high school soccer. I'm always coaching, uh, club soccer. So it was a really good experience last, uh, this past season. Uh, talking about our season, uh, it was a really, really good season for me and for the boys. Talking about, uh, the last year, uh, we having, uh, really tough games and being in the tougher conference, I guess in the state. Having, uh, in our conference, uh, the state run, run it up, uh, Hill Moray, Mottamidai, Saint Thomas, uh, all these type of teams. Uh, and, uh, we compete really well against them. This year, uh, we, uh, not just two, two games of the season, we lost four, three or more goals. Every single game is like really close, 1-0, 2-1. Uh, and the best thing is we showed them that, that we compete, we are a team that is hard to beat, uh, this year. So our record was like 5-8-1. And, uh, I invited four of my captains tonight, though they're working, so they made it. It was something like that, though, during the season. So, uh, sometimes they don't show up for our games because they work, stuff like that. But, uh, I was really impressed that for the last season, we have, including middle school, uh, eight, 78 kids registered for soccer. And, uh, I believe that we doing, uh, we're going to develop a lot of players. We have a lot of really talented kids and, uh, middle school program, uh, JV. And, uh, also we have, uh, all-state player, Rodrigo Burgos, who, uh, was, uh, he is the all-state, uh, team, uh, second team. So he got the award this year. So, and we're going to keep working hard for, uh, for to, uh, for, uh, to be like, uh, be more, uh, competitive and, uh, bring really good memories for South St. Paul.
I, I believe in.
All right, last but certainly not least, uh, we'll close on a highlight here, but we're going to have our bowling program come up. We have Mike Boudreaux is going to come up and speak for them.
True. Last but not least, very few people in this town even know that we have a program. And it's very sad to say that we hadn't been able to be successful enough to get that out. Currently, we have, uh, 24 students that participate either at the varsity or JV level. We have one great JV, uh, varsity team and two wonderful JV teams. We also allow fifth and sixth graders to come and practice with us because the league allows that. They can't participate until they become seventh graders, but they can come for the coaching and to learn what the environment is about for them to be able to be successful when they move up. In that group of JV players, both, all three of our teams qualified for the state tournament this year. And two of the teams finished in the top 15 of the state of Minnesota. 134 teams. It's really impressive. And, um, uh, I, I, for us, uh, the coaches and myself, I've been volunteering for about six years now to run this program. And I keep saying I'm going to retire and I'm going to stop, but I keep getting pulled back in. And we also run two seasons. So we run a co-ed season in the fall for boys and girls, which runs from September through, we just finished in December. In January, we start the girl's season. So we have strictly a season for girl bowlers only. And it's the most wonderful season in the world because there's no testosterone there and there's no egos in that group. And the girls get to excel on their own. And this year, we placed in the, um, seventh and eighth grade category, they have a program called Rising Stars. And of our conference, which was 18 kids were chosen for Rising Stars, the top five are all from South St. Paul. And the sixth and seventh and eighth were, were in that group also. We had eight kids selected for the Rising Stars program, which is, um, really good because there's a lot of young kids out there and, and, and our kids performed, uh, they performed very well. So with, with that, they, the JV program is, is real important. I coached one of the teams and I have, um, Don Athie, who isn't here tonight, he coaches the other JV team. And one of the varsity coaches helps us, uh, with this phenomenon, if you've not heard about it, of two-handed bowling. Have you ever heard of it? Have you seen it? Okay, it's, it's the going thing, yeah. Linda's, Linda's boy, he, he just learned this year and he's really advanced a lot. He's really improved.
Great coaches, great team, that's why.
Yeah, and Aaron is, um, is, uh, actually at the varsity level, both coaches are two-handed bowlers. Um, but at the JV level, Aaron took the time to work with four of our boys and girl, or boys, not a lot of girls do it, but our boys, to bring them, and, and the key factor here is fill percentage. And they all started at about 20%. And by the end of the season, they were all up over 41 to 50% in fill, due to Aaron's, um, ability to help them, uh, with, with that project. Tonight, I have, I have, um, the varsity team with me and the coaches. And I have, um, Mark Burke, AJ, Wayne, Wayne, Coach Nick, head coach, Athen, and John. Now, John is an import. We have, we have, John came to me, uh, about four years ago, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And one day at practice and said, you got a bowling team? Can I bowl with you? I said, I don't know where you're from. He says, I'm from Harding. I said, doesn't Harding have a bowling team? He goes, no, Harding doesn't have a bowling team. I was like, come on. So John came on board with us and he's been in the program through the JV and now with the varsity. And I have two children, uh, students from Hudson, Wisconsin. So we're listed in the program as South St. Paul, Hudson, and Harding. Because we're a co-op, basically that way. But this team, um, they accomplished something that hasn't been done since 1988. And the bowling program in this town goes back to the 80s, okay? There's people in this town that have, and of course, our head coach, uh, Nick Luna, he coached, he bowled as a student in high, South St. Paul High School also. We have some alumni, uh, bowlers that have gone on to college. And I don't know if you're familiar with this, but there's a program here for, um, for these kids that, um, college coaches are pursuing them all the time, um, for scholarships to go to college to bowl. So let, was it Saturday? I think it was Saturday, they had a combine and the kids went to the combine to bowl in front of the college coaches. And so usually when they're up in the 70 percentile or higher, which all five, six of these boys were this year, these coaches are looking for them to give them scholarships. And sometimes it's a full ride, um, to go and bowl for, for whatever college it is. Um, so it's really important during the season for them to maintain these high levels. Also, they're obvious grade points. But, uh, so it's. But, so it's, right now, I'm not sure of the three seniors I have, if they've been approached or not, but that's opportunity. The kids at the seventh grade level, they know that. And in the junior program, which we hold at Tukula's, on Saturday morning, we start with the bumpers and we go all the way up to the high school. There's a program called the SMART program, where part of the money they pay goes into a savings account for them. By the time they get to be a senior in high school, and I have one student that went to college, and when she went to college on a full ride, the USBC wrote her a check for $4,000 for her books.
Wow.
This program is in the USBC that keeps the money in there for these kids until they, and it doesn't matter if they go to technical college or whatever they do, they can go in and reach this money, if it's $500 or $5,000, and take it out and use it for that college that they're going to, or technical school they're going to. So this is a, a program that I think needs more recognition from the whole state of Minnesota. It's not just South St. Paul. So at the end of the day, these guys went through, at the state tournament, in the last seven games, and mowed down the competition to win the Class A state championship for South St. Paul. Here's your seniors right here, you can have at them.
I want them, I want them.
Yeah, you want them.
I have one other question for you, too. How many of you guys are left-handed? How many bowl left?
Just you. Just John.
Is that fair?
No.
Yes.
No, it's not.
The funny, the funny part, Bill, is that John came to us as a one-handed bowler, left-handed, right?
Yeah.
Now he's an accomplished two-handed bowler that, just dynamite bowler, he's just grown.
You know, I go back so far that I actually set pins.
At Packer Lanes.
Not at Packer Lanes, at Matys.
Oh, Matys.
On Concord Street, with the semi-automatics.
Yep.
So I do know how to set pins if I had to.
I, I was at Wells Fargo the day they broke ground for the bowling alley.
Yeah.
I helped turn the shovel.
But.
So Coach Nick, I think he's got a couple of things that he might want to say about his players individually. And Coach Aaron in the back there, so I'll let, I'll let you go at the seniors.
Okay, get the seniors up there.
Okay.
You know what my question is, right?
So I'm Jonathan, and my plan after high school is probably go to a two-year school to become a mechanic or like electrician.
Good idea.
My name's Athen. I plan to get my generals at a local community college and then pursue an education in finance at a four-year university.
Very cool.
Cool.
My name's Wayne, and I plan to just go to a two-year school, something maybe technical or a community college, and that's all I plan right now.
And just for your information, I can remember now that when I was at River Falls, which is a few years ago, you could test out a bowling, in other words, it's a one-credit physical education course, if you could bowl 170. So, so you've got a free credit at River Falls if you can bowl 170.
So the other thing I missed was that John and Wayne and, and Athen and Mark all made all-conference, they were all-conference bowlers. Mark bowled a 300 game this year.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Mark bowled a 300 game.
We were there, the whole place was screaming.
Yeah.
Screaming.
AJ was not there. AJ, and AJ's our youngest bowler. Next year, we'll have back Mark and AJ and, and Noah, oh, that's our other Hudson boy is Noah Hanson. And so we're hoping that these, at least three of these JV players can move up and fill these shoes. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your efforts.
Thank you. It was a great season, guys.
Less than 10 strikes in a row, is that?
All right, so that wraps up our portion of the night. So again, I just want to say thank you for your continued support. Again, a lot of these student athletes that are here today have multiple things going on. A lot of them have hockey, basketball, you know, wrestling, all that kind of stuff going on. Couple of things that we just want to highlight, again, our winter seasons are going, our boys and girls basketball, boys and girls hockey, wrestling, gymnastics, swimming. Just this week, we'll have hockey games, dances competing at home, swim is Thursday. Friday, we have girls hockey, gymnastics, and basketball. Knowledge Bowl is going, they just placed second at a recent meet, it's one of their best finishes. So a lot of good things are happening. And then as Mr. Holson said, One Act Play is coming up, Show Choir is coming up, all-conference band is coming up. So there's a lot of really good things coming up this winter. And if you guys are ever wondering what's going on, you can always go on Facebook, Athletics and Activities, South St. Paul, or even Twitter, South St. Paul Athletics and Activities. And we try to post updates with what's, what our students in our activities department are doing that day. Thanks again for inviting me here. I will let you guys get back to regular order, business, however you say it.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, Elise is my granddaughter.
Elise, yeah.
So proud.
Does it relate to mine, too?
Didn't know we had someone bowl a 300 that time.
Seriously, like, and it was during the tournament, and, and everybody was watching his game. Everybody was watching his game, yeah.
Pressure, right, on the last one?
I love, I love the focus that our coaches and our students have on GPA. I mean, really, how awesome did all those teams do with, with gold and silver honors? And then the other thing that I wrote down that was just really, I think, that stood out to me, was the impact that they have on the community. Really making sure, you know, that, that these students not only have student first before athlete, but that they're citizens of this community and that, that they are, that kids are watching them, and just really making an impact. I know that Wayne, one of the seniors in bowling, he would coach the JV team when he wasn't playing his own games. And, you know, my son, it just talks, it just talked about him on the way home, again, like he's just such a great guy, mommy's such a great guy. So really just wanna, wanna shout out Brady as the director of athletics and, and activities, and all the coaches, the families that are putting in a lot of time, a lot of money, energy, sweat, cheering yourself hoarse to make sure that, that these kids are getting something out of these activities and athletics. So thanks so much.
Well, it, it also speaks to, you know, what, you know, our HR director has been telling, you know, various people that like, you can come into our, into our school system and really be welcomed into a family atmosphere where like, the seniors, athletes will walk through the halls of the elementary school to go like, you know, parade around and, and sign autographs. Like, how awesome would that be to be in high school and, and signing elementary autographs? Like, I really think it speaks to, to all the strengths that our school district has despite, you know, again, being a smaller school district, but the spirit that we can bring forward.
Yeah, great.
Next part's not you.
Next part, yeah.
I think we also need to turn our attention to honoring other members of our community as well. We have a couple of board members who are stepping down, and this is their last meeting with us, and really want to acknowledge all of their service and their work that they have been a part. When stepping onto the board and choosing to serve your community, you don't always know what's in front of you, and you don't know what this work looks like. And the three of you, Chris, Bill, and Linda, who are stepping down at this time, you have done this with absolute grace and with a dedication to our community that is really admirable. This is hard work, and sometimes you don't get the acknowledgement for all the work that you do going into this. And I can just speak for myself, this being in my first term, all three of you have been really great mentors and friends through the process, so I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Zambrino?
Oh, thank you, Vice Chair Ash. Yeah, we're stealing the meeting here for a minute, Chair Diaz. Absolutely want to echo that, you know, I have, I was just gonna think, and when I started, I got four bonus months with this school board, as it sits here tonight. So getting to start in March and being selected by this board and then getting that extra time, just been absolutely amazing and fulfilling. We had our, our board retreat with Dennis Cheesebrow, who we partnered with, to talk about our model of governance and management and what it means to be on a board. And one of the things he talked about is the unique opportunity we have in a small community like this to make relationships and friendships. And so while I know Chris is stepping away, Linda's stepping away, Bill's stepping away from this work officially, I know you'll be ongoing supporters, and I know that when I see you in the community, I know you, I know your family, we can catch up, and it's just a special place to get to be superintendent for me, of course, but so much to do with our board and then all the amazing people we saw here earlier. So in honor of the work you've done, we did have, so Crystal Apple's made, and it has your name, and it says positively changing our world with your years of service. So I do have one of those for each of you, and excited to, to give those to you. So just thank you for giving me this great opportunity, it's been so much fun to work with you, and I'm sure others have some words they may want to add as well here.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Should we add our words now or wait till the end?
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, I too, I just want to say a huge amount of thanks to Bill, to Linda, to Chris, for being on our school board and assisting us and, and just being so kind and thoughtful and generous with all of your thoughts, your assistance, attending all of our events. And I consider you all, each and every one of you, a friend. So even though we won't be on the board together, we still will be friends and community members. And so at any time, please feel free to contact us if you have feelings or ideas or opinions. Gladly will accept and welcome your, your feelings and opinions. So truly, truly thank you for your service, for all these years that you've been on our board. Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something. Coming in four years ago, Lisa actually sent me a picture today, and my son was really little, sitting in the back rows with my parents and watching, probably not me on the TV, probably himself, but just being very young and all, all the years now, the four years that have gone by, and really, four years doesn't feel very long, but the work that we put in meant so much. And during the new board member training, I had this great sense of, of not sadness, but like an emptiness that I wouldn't be able to continue this work. And then I remembered that the one thing that we do ask is that the community come forward and talk, and now I'm a community member again. So don't be surprised, Wendy, when, you know, I call and I reach out, when you see my face in the, the gallery, and it will, it's come back around that I have to model what we are asking the community to do. So this is not, I was thinking like, this work is done for me, it's not done, it's not done. And I think when you are a part of South St. Paul, it should never be done. So thank you for, and, and Chris and Bill, you know, to, to work alongside you all, but thank you for the folks who are carrying this torch forward. Thank you to Dr. Zambrino, who came on. You know, when we hire somebody, they actually hire us, too. And he took a chance on us, so thank you for saying yes in March. We also cheered, just as much as we did for Mark's 300 game, we also cheered standing in the library when you said yes.
Yeah, I'll never forget the phone call.
And thank you to Lisa Brandecker, who, without your dedication to the city, to the school district, to, to the superintendent's role, to the school board's role, we wouldn't be able to get up here and crack jokes and have it be just, you know, so easy to do. So thank you for everything. That felt like a goodbye, so see ya.
We gotta finish the meeting, and the reward is you get cupcakes at the end. And for anyone who's still in the audience.
I haven't seen him, I haven't seen him, I've heard him promise, but I haven't seen him.
We'll deliver.
That's true.
Out of my word.
I, I have something, if you can humor me for about three minutes.
Sure.
That, after you humored me with the quality and action, but this is my last shot. So listen carefully to the last two words I say, but I want to start out by thanking the people who supported me four years ago in 2018. And I want to thank the people who supported me in 2022, number two. Number three, I want to welcome Bernie, Tim, and Ann, and wish them the best of luck, and I know they'll have it, and, and do a good job and, and be a good, strong board. And last, well, it's not last, but I want to thank the support of my family over the last four years. Somebody can remember back to my third meeting when my wife passed away. And I want to thank my support group, and I have them listed, Frank and Kelly, Izzy, Avery, Cece, and Sweet Caroline, and then my son Will, Lisa, Kylie, Jack, Josh, and Talia. I couldn't have done it without you. And I can't put into words how much I love all of you. And then we'll get to the last two words, and hopefully I didn't take all three minutes, but remember these two words if you remember anything, and these two words are, go Packers.
Yay.
I almost thought he was gonna say River Falls.
Good, good words to remember. Well, I've got all these notes here, and I think if I started going through all of them, we'd be here all night, so I'll try and cut it short and just say that eight years ago, when I decided to go on this adventure, it was because my two children had graduated from the secondary and had, it really set them up well for their next steps, and I just wanted to thank the, this district for everything that they had given to my family, and then thought that this would be a good way to, to do it. And I've seen some of the successes that we've had, again, the list could be long, but it's, you know, hiring a new superintendent, the clean financial audits that we've had for those eight years, the development of the career readiness program. And as I was starting, a former board member came up to me and said, one thing you have to accomplish is the CLC is kind of pushed into this corner down in the hockey rink, you gotta get them a real place to, to call their, their own building. And now we see that building up on, on Thompson, and it's, it's a real building. So I'm, I'm very happy to have, list that as the accomplishments. And there are others. I, the, the one thing that stands out probably the most for me, it was when I started eight years ago, as John noted, I had no, really had no idea what the school board did. You know, it takes a year probably to even get comfortable with it, and a couple of years to really get a grip on it. And what stands out is the time that is spent. You know, it's, remember people joking, it's two meetings a month, that's all it is. And that's certainly not the case, you know, there's a lot of time spent, you know, on committees and getting into, involved with outside groups and the, just the PR part of the job where you're going to events and representing the district and, and talking it all up. It's, it's really quite a commitment. Some of it is difficult, some of it's really fun, and you enjoy it, but there are times where you think, oh my gosh, how did I get myself into this? But as you power through it, you realize that's the job. And so I do want to just say that all, all of us are going through that as school board members. And for that, you have my respect and, and thanks, because it's a heck of a commitment. And whether we're leaving or staying, everyone up here is, has made that commitment, and I think you should all be proud of that. So thank you for the opportunity, and go Packers.
Yay.
One thing none of you also acknowledged is you were also board members through a pandemic. No one ever could have predicted board work looking exactly as it did over your last term. You didn't sign up for it when it had started, and it sort of happened to you. And, you know, none of us were exact experts or knew the pathway to navigate. And, you know, none of us were exact experts or knew the pathway to navigate through that. But you learned along the way and handled that with such amazing grace and really put our students' success and safety first. And that's really admirable.
Yes. No, it's been, you've all been just tremendous. I had no idea what I was getting into when I, you know, logged in after election day and I'm like, oh, I won. Okay, now, now what are we going to do? But no, you've all been just tremendously helpful of, as John said, serving through a pandemic. Both John and I were sworn in virtually during the, during the pandemic. And so being able to like, the amount of just help and grace that you all provided to us as we were coming in new and no one knew what was going on in the world was just so phenomenal. And you're just, you know, I, we'll see you around. I already told Bill we're going to go to a basketball game together. And you just, you know, phenomenal leaders and, and find other ways to serve. I guess if I could leave you with one other thing, find some other passion that you can dedicate yourselves to.
Thank you.
Indeed, thank you.
All right.
I think we have real board work too.
Yeah.
Let's move on with this agenda.
Oh, I can report on the public listening session today. We did have one community member come in to speak extensively against gender affirmation in the schools. And the board was good listeners for that. And then Director Raj, if you want to talk about the committee of the whole meeting?
Sure. Prior to every board meeting, we have a committee of the whole meeting where much of the board work actually occurs. And some of these items you will hear about later on, but discussing custodial agreement, student teacher agreement with Augsburg. I can tell you that that works. That was my hook into this community. My student taught here and now I'm here. And then some additional information about property tax data and a little bit of discussion about future committee work and liaison assignments. But the board will have an organizational meeting in January with the new board as we sort of discuss that. And some wisdom shared by our board members who are stepping down, giving a little bit of input on discussions about our guiding change for our budget going forward. That will also be an ongoing discussion in the new year.
Great. Thanks so much for that. Moving on to our consent items and just.
I have a comment.
Oh, sure.
In light of this listening session, I wanted to make sure that I asked you what the top three expenses on this levy were going to be.
Top three expenses?
Yes. I understand. Let's see, property taxes. So today's a listening session, so that's why I'm here.
The listening session was at 4:15 though.
Okay, well.
But we've got, I've got your question.
My tax report says it's at seven o'clock. If I'm, if that's a mistake, I can understand, but if you can humor me, I'd appreciate it.
Well, actually what we can do is if you can email me, I'll make sure to get that answer to you. Linda Diaz.
Is your email available?
It is. It is L Diaz, L D I A Z at S S P P S, I'll say in public, yep, S S P P S dot org, dot org.
And Chair Diaz, what we had planned was that Brady Hoffman, who's our Director of Finance, was going to present the truth in taxation. And then there is an opportunity for comment with.
Oh, you're right. You're right. I'm sorry.
You can still send any questions or things we may not be able to speak to if there's something you wanted to find out more about. But hopefully in a moment when Brady presents the truth in taxation, you might get some answers you're looking for. And then certainly we can entertain here.
Yeah, so if you can, we just have a couple more business items to get through and then the Director of Finance will present. And at that time, we'll ask for any discussion items.
Okay, thank you. I just want to move on beyond it. It looked like it was number C on the action items. But if it's still coming, I'll wait.
Yes, it is still coming. Thanks for the reminder, Dr. Zambrino.
It's different this time because we have the, the listening session for the general listening session, and then there's another opportunity for us to do.
You're right. And Brady did mention that earlier. That was my mistake.
Well, they only come around once a year, right?
Right, yes. All right. So again, the reminder about the consent items, they're items that come through each meeting that don't need much discussion, including bills payable, claims and our staff report. And do I have a motion for the approval of our consent items tonight?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, that motion carries. All right.
So I did have a quick update on a few items as well when.
Oh, yes, I jumped to.
We don't have so much activity and excitement in your last meeting and everything else, right?
Yeah, I wanted it to be perfect, but why?
Your first time missing an item on order ever as chair. I mean.
Right, well, let's jump back then, but at least that's done. There are no policies to review, so look at that. It's all you, Dr. Zambrino.
All right. Well, I will try to be beefed because I do know we have some more business, but always fun to share with our board and our community some of the great things going on. Excited for the first time we've ever done this, we're going to try a job fair. So we all know that recruiting and hiring folks is as challenging as it's ever been. And because we are a special school district with close partnership between the city and the school district, we are partnering with the city to host our first job fair. So it's February 15th from three to seven, and that'll be happening at the secondary building at, so at the St. Paul Secondary, middle school or high school, however you may think about that. Opportunity to apply, interview, ask questions. Anyone ages 16 or older is able to attend. And we're really excited about this. We hope it can become an annual tradition. One of the things I think we're hopeful is that people understand how accessible jobs are in the schools. We don't know that, it seems like sometimes they'll realize how many jobs they might qualify for within the school district. I'm assuming our partners at the city would say a lot of the same. So excited to try that for the first time. We've shared this in the past about Parent Square as our messaging system coming online. So we've been able to use Parent Square to send out messages, but now it's going live to be able to do two-way messaging back and forth so that families can also message school staff or teachers directly. Really neat functionality within it. You can use your own language of preference on your device. So if you get the app, you can set it to be in Spanish. A parent could, for example, say, I want to message my kindergarten teacher. They can type it in Spanish. If the teacher's preferred language is English, they'll receive it in English. So it allows that two-way dialogue in whatever preferred language. And then if you have students in multiple schools, all of it is organized really well so you can just get one clean, concise message feed.
That's nice.
All right, some of the highlights around the district. Our Capoja third graders got to visit the state capitol as part of their PYP unit inquiry, how we organize ourselves. So they had an opportunity to learn about all the branches of government. So coming in and learning about the executive, the legislative and the judicial branch. And they actually got to have a tour of each one of those areas at the capitol. So they got to see the governor's conference room, part of the executive branch, the House and Senate chambers within the legislative and the Supreme Court room. So very cool opportunity to develop our civically engaged students. We talk every once in a while and it did come up, I think Director Walker mentioned being proud of the work with Tri District CAPS. Well, even more to be proud of, Ben Kush received an award. He received the Willis Branding Excellence in Youth Employment Services Award. And so that award is presented to an organization, programmer, individual who is committed to preparing youth in Dakota or Scott County for the work world. That's our, our CAPS, as people know, is our collaborative effort between us, Two Rivers and Simley High Schools. And then just neat to see the recognition that we have and just being there, I was there on Friday at the awards ceremony, to see the connections that Ben has and how that networking, so what an important role that position plays as a partner between the three districts as well as all of the community partners. So kudos to Ben and congratulations on winning that. We have a exciting announcement here tonight. Maran Daniels recently published a children's book called The Elements of Art. She noticed that students in class were struggling to identify art elements in their work and had a hard time finding resources to make it easier for them, so she took it upon herself. So she made a book and includes beginner, intermediate and advanced level art projects for children to explore on their own. And she's, of course, used many of those projects in her classroom. She says she shared her journey with her students over the past year and a half about writing it and publishing it. So great to model that whole experience as an author as well. So this past week, she read it out loud to her classes and excited to report that it is the number one in new releases in Amazon's children's art book category.
Oh, cool.
So very cool.
Awesome.
And we already heard about our bowlers, but amazing, exciting, since I think he said 1988 was the last time, but our varsity bowling team were the Class A High School State Champions. So again, shout out to them for that work. As always, we can be followed on social media, whatever format people like, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, LinkedIn. Always try to kick out great announcements, information that people would be needing to be aware of on the social media. And then some just reminders about important dates coming up. We have, I just still can't believe it, winter break right around the corner. So we will be out of session from December 22nd to January 2nd. A lot of our school-based staff are 12 months, so they'll be taking vacation. So very, very quiet around the building. So if people need to get a hold of the, the buildings, we'll certainly have staff available, but it'll be very limited. Just want to make sure people realize that we do want staff to take time and be with family and recharge. January 16th, there's no school. It's a district holiday. February 3rd and 6th, no school for staff professional development. And February 15th, again, a reminder that we have that job fair. As always, again, our meeting materials available on our website. You can review past meetings or materials that we're going over. We know there's a lot of information, for example, tonight, or if folks miss the recognition of our athletics and activities, students, they can always go back and watch that again. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question on that. Just a quick question for you. You mentioned this Parent Square messaging, is that something only for parents pretty much?
My understanding is it's a parent account. I could find out. Why don't we connect afterwards and we can kind of see what you're looking for and how we can help you.
All right. So now is the time for the public hearing for taxes payable in 2023 and our other business items. We still look for a motion, right, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to move the Sal St. Paul School Board to certify the payable 2023 levy at $15,166,270.46. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And I believe we, oh, any discussion? And this is where we give a presentation and then the discussion. Thanks, Brady.
All right. Good evening. It is now time for our public hearing for taxes payable in 2023. This is a public meeting that has to take place between November 25th and December 28th at six p.m. or later. It can be part of our regular meeting and we must allow for public comments. Within this presentation, we'll talk about the current year budget as well as a proposed property tax levy. So the district's budget is broken down into several funds. They're kind of like different checkbooks that serve different purposes. Our main funds are the general fund, the food service fund, community service, our debt service, internal service and our OPEB trust fund. Each year, the school board is required to adopt a budget by the end of June for the upcoming fiscal year. Here's a recap of our FY '22 actual results and then our current FY '23 budget. So down the left side, we have the general fund broken out into restricted and other categories and then the rest of the funds we just listed. So we have our beginning fund balance, where we landed, actual revenues and expenses, and then where our ending fund balance ended for FY '22. Those are the gray heading columns. So we started the year with $9 million in reserve in our overall fund balance. We did grow that slightly to $13 million for the end of the year. A big part of that is in our internal service fund. And then we look at our current year budget, that is showing $52,681,737 in revenues and $52,325,545 in expense. So our full budget book is available on the district's website if you would like more information on that. So we're going to shift and look at the breakdown of our revenues. So when we look at our general, our overall revenues, 86.8% of that is in the general fund. So that's our main operating, checkbook, main operating bucket of the district. Food service represents three and a half percent, community service represents 4%, and our debt service fund represents 5.7%. Looking at the general fund alone, the total revenue budget there is $45,715,000 and 73.2% of that is composed of state revenues. So the per pupil formula allowance and other categorical state aids makes up 73% of our budget. Our local revenues make up 18.4%, and then our federal revenues represents 8.3. And that federal revenue is larger than what we've seen historically because there still is that COVID money coming through, the federal COVID dollars. So that is a larger slice than what our federal has historically been. So looking at how we spend our money in the general fund, so our general fund expenditure budget is $45,597,467. The two largest slices of the pie are salaries and benefits. So we are a people-heavy organization, so just over 80% of our budget goes to salaries and benefits to employ all the staff within the district. The next slice there is purchase services at 14.6%. And then supplies, materials, capital and other make up the remaining small slices of the general fund budget. If we shift and look at that programmatically, so what areas are we spending these dollars on? Regular instruction alone is 45% of where our money goes, but when you lump in vocational, special ed, instructional support, we get up to almost 74% of our budget goes to instruction. The remainder of that, of our budget goes to pupil services, which is things like transportation, sites and buildings, so maintaining our buildings, the facilities, keeping them operating. And then we've got administration and district support as two of the smaller slices there on this diagram. Shifting to property taxes, so every owner of taxable property pays, pays property taxes to various taxing jurisdictions. So you've got the county, you've got the city, the school district, special districts, all of those roll into what our taxpayers will pay. Each jurisdiction sets their own tax levy, often based on limits in state law. And the county is the one who will collect the, send out the bills, collect the taxes and remit those funds back to the district. For school district property taxes, each district may levy taxes in over 40 different categories. So it's very heavily set in state statute on what we're allowed to levy for, otherwise it's voter approved. So those are the two categories that we can levy for. We don't have the discretion to just levy our taxpayers. It's either in statute or voter approved. So looking at our taxes payable in 2023, our taxes payable is increasing 3.9 million or 35.2%. There's several reasons here in the next couple of slides as to what's composing, making up that increase. So here's an overall summary of our general fund, community service, debt service levies, broken down into the various categories. So we talked about there's 40 different categories that we can levy within. These are just some of the larger components. So we can see our general fund is up 49%. Our community service is down 17.7. Our debt service is up 17.9 for an overall change of 35.2%. So when we look at what makes up these, the biggest changes from year over year, the largest one is related to the general fund's voter-approved operating referendum and equity. So the operating referendum itself is up almost 3.8 million. There is an offsetting negative adjustment with equity revenue. So as the operating referendum, operating referendum goes up, the equity levy goes down. And this is related to the voter-approved increase from this past November of 1,150 per pupil. There is also the way the levy cycle works. We always have levy adjustments that come through. So in 2022, the school board is certifying the levy for taxes that are paid in the calendar of 2023, but it's not actually revenue until the '23, '24 fiscal year. So because of this timing that happens, we initially levy based on estimates and then those estimates get trued up and adjusted once that year ends. So some of ours are expense reimbursement related, so we levy a dollar amount and then we get trued up based on what actually happened down the road. So we're having a positive adjustment of $165,000 come through compared to what those negative adjustments were in the previous year. Within our debt service one, we do have a $425,000 increase compared to where we were a year ago. And a big part of this is we refunded our 2014 bonds this year, which saves the district money over the next several years, 661,000. And so as part of that restructure of debt, there was a slight increase this year to help maintain level or declining tax rates that relates to our debt service. And then within our debt service fund, so this is a fund where we're required to levy 105% of what our debt obligations are. And because our, we typically have a higher, so that additional 5% is to account for delinquencies. And because we have a higher collection rate within those and don't have that much for delinquent tax collections, we accumulate a fund balance, which then per state law, they make a negative adjustment that refunds that money back to the taxpayers. So we have a negative adjustment of 183,000. So there are several factors that can impact an individual's property taxes. So the change in the value of an individual property, the change in the total value of all the properties within the district, as well as increases or decreases in those levy amounts that we just reviewed. as well as increases or decreases in those levy amounts that we just reviewed. So I want to go through a little quick scenario that shows how the district's levy can stay the same, but how an individual's property taxes can change just based on how the value of their home has changed. So the, if you think about it as a pie, the district's levy is a pie, and each homeowner pays a slice. So we have two homes, each worth $100,000. The total levy, let's say, is $500. Each of them will pay $250. We go to the next year, the district's pie stays the same. It's still that same 500. But if the orange house goes up 10% and the blue house goes up 25, you can see how the blue house now had an increase in taxes and the orange house had a decrease, even though the district's pie didn't change. So there's the mechanics that happen within the property values that also come into play as to how each individual homeowner's taxes are impacted. So the next chart's going to give a four-year comparison of what's happened based on various tax values within the district of what those tax liabilities have been. So we look at the estimated market values down the left side for residential and commercial. And then we have a recap here showing what the taxes payable were for 2020, '21, '22, what we had initially proposed, and then what's changed since that initial proposal went out, and then how that change compares to where we were a year ago. Those net change amounts are really due to the operating referendum that was approved, as well as other adjustments that came through the levy calculation system. The next few slides will show these numbers in a little different, a little easier-to-understand perspective. So you can see a $125,000 home over the last four years has been paying $527,000, $550,000, $513,000, and then now increasing to $674,000. So the gray bars represent what's been happening. And then the maroon color is showing that other adjustments and the operating referendum. So that change, that net change that happened from September to now, mainly because of that operating referendum. So the $275,000 home saw an additional $447,000 come through since September. Here's showing what an impact is on a $425,000 residential property as well as a $500,000 commercial property. So this last slide, similar information, but now it takes into account what happens if, when you factor in the change in the value of a property. So when we look at, let's say, the $275,000 home, you go backwards four years based on the way property values have grown, that home would have grown from $220,000 to $275,000 over the last four years. So you can see how, when you factor in property value change along with the change in the levy, how that has adjusted year over year. So at this point in the meeting, we will open it up for public comment. And then following public comment, we will turn it over to the board for questions and to consider certifying the 2023 property tax levy.
Great. And as we've heard, we do have public comment. Now's your time.
And on your way up, it's great to know who's speaking. So if you don't mind letting us know who you are, we'd appreciate that.
I'm Hank Janrich. I live on 13th Avenue South. I don't have any questions after seeing his presentation, so thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming and staying through all the activities, too.
So that concludes the Truth in Taxation hearing, and we'll now turn it over to the school board for questions and to consider approval of the 2023 property tax levy.
Great. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Raj?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Lala Bertie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
And Chair Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Moving on to the next item, we're looking for approval from the, from the board to approve the acceptance of gifts, gifts resolution. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And we'd like to know any discussion about the gifts.
Brady, was there anything that stood out in this? I'm sorry, I didn't hear if there was anyone in particular in the resolution.
There's just three listed in there, free cash donations to a couple of different programs. I don't have them memorized off the top of my head.
Okay.
On the second page of...
Great.
High school IB program to Capoja for random acts of kindness, and supplies and computer to early learning.
Thanks for pulling that up. Awesome. Board members, any discussion? Lisa, will you call the roll?
Just a thank you to our community that supports us.
Yeah.
Director Walker?
Yes.
Raj?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Lala Bertie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
And Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Thank you, moving on. I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2022, '23 independent employee agreement for part-time cleaners. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And do we have any discussion? Great.
Thank you, school board. Just wanted to mention that this is the independent agreement that we're creating for the part-time cleaners in our building, previously part of the custodial contract. They were, created a new independent group for them during this most recent negotiations with the contract. And now they have their own independent group. So that's what's up before you tonight for a vote.
Great. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the revised 2022, '23 miscellaneous wages. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. And more discussion, thanks, Joel.
Absolutely. So this is just an update to the miscellaneous wages for a few of our substitute positions, specifically to make sure that we're being competitive in the marketplace.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion also carries. Looking for a motion to approve the 2022, '23 student-teacher agreement with Augsburg University. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And Joel, thank you.
This is the first of what we hope to be several student-teacher agreements with our colleges and universities for this coming spring, for student teachers to come in and work with our own teachers and see what it's like to work in the classroom with students, get experience, and hopefully create pride within them while they're here in South St. Paul so that they'll want to come back and either live in our community and contribute or as teachers in our school system. So another way to build a pipeline.
Or both.
For our students, or both. That would be great, too.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion also carries. And one last. I am looking for a motion to approve the resolution designating polling places for the 2023 elections.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And any discussion?
Yeah, real quick, we, people might wonder, why are we doing that? Well, we have to do that every year. So prior to the end of the calendar year, we do need a resolution designating our polling locations. We are not changing those, so anyone who just voted would remember where they are. We don't expect to use them, but it is in case we needed to call a special election. So getting this resolution passed will position us with that with the county.
Great, thank you. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Weber?
Yes.
Lala Bertie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Raj?
Yes.
And Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
And that motion carries.
I just have a question of number B. You said the acceptance of gifts is in a budget somewhere. Where do I find that?
It's also in the materials.
All of our, our gifts received are in our board materials. So anyone who wants, as we were showing earlier on our website, we list all of our board materials to the board package. They're happy to show you that after the meeting where you can find that.
Is that this pamphlet outside?
And there's a copyright out here in the packet, yes.
Is it also on the website somewhere?
Yes, sir.
I may have to ask you about that later.
Yes.
I know for sure where it is.
Yeah, no problem. And, you know, it's a good thing for people to just know that we don't... A lot of times, people think, oh, I'll just make a donation to the school district, but there is a formal process by which our school board does accept, formally accept gifts. In part required by statute, but also as Vice Chair Rajshat to thank people who are supporting us, so.
Absolutely.
Serves two purposes, really.
Thank you. And that is it for our business items. And we are looking for our board reports, where you've seen a passion. And we'll start with Bill.
Of course, you know I'm going right to basketball. I got to see the Packers, who lost eight seniors last year, their top eight players. And they played Como Park last Thursday night. And they have not rebuilt, they've reloaded. So if you have the time to go and see them, it's going to be well worth it for everybody, and go Packers.
Good spell. Monica.[1512.94]